Well, so that's been going on, but what we found in our searches differs from what he is currently occupying. So we're showing some of what he's occupying the city of, it says somewhere like he's gone up. Yes, and that's still going on. But there's one line in there that says, if we can't find that document. So that's what this is. Well, that's what I was wanting to do after this guy. That's separate from what we're meeting from, but he's on it.
The two legislative committees in my right, I've been in high states in America, and if you're in a public or religious hands, one nation, one nation, invisible with every nation that's around.
Okay, let's start with roll call.
Pop. Eddie.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Stevens, near Scott.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Woods.
Here.
Beeson. Six aldermen present, two absent.
Alderman Beeson will be there about five minutes. We'll move on to approval of minutes of previous meetings. Okay, roll and disperse.
I'll make a motion for group extension, I'm second.
Second. Is there a roll call over here?
Eddie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Stevens, yes, Scott.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Six eight zero eights.
Okay, first, I have an associate since Ben wasn't here last time when we got today. Okay, Ben, there he is.
Couple quick items for tonight, first being the request for a loan disbursement that we had sent over. And it is in the amount of forty-two thousand thirty-one dollars and six cents.
Make a motion, we paid person number six with a packed bill amount of forty-two thousand thirty-one dollars and six cents. Second. Any discussion or questions? Take a roll call vote on that.
Schneider.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Six eight zero eights.
Quick update on that one, we're in a bit of a holding pattern, they're waiting on some equipment for their HVAC installation, which is really just a couple movers. After that, they should have the actual feed equipment in, get that in, and probably March, mid-March, they'll actually install the feed equipment for that carbon. And from there, they'll continue through the process, probably get everything hooked up and be started. Shooting for late March, I believe was the last time I seen something, early April, somewhere in that timeframe, so that's, project's still moving forward. The only other item that I wanted to touch base on tonight was OzLab. DNR actually posted their entire grant, all their grants, and their application schedules and everything else, so I don't remember exactly when that OzLab's coming up, I want to say it's sometime in August. But, we had discussed last year, we tabled it, we're gonna try and hit this next application period, I believe, for the out at the lake, for the OzLab stuff that came around. So that is coming up here in about six months, if we wanted to keep moving forward with that, we still got a lot of planning to do, so that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to reports of officers.
All right, we have a number of items this evening. First item is the second presentation of the redevelopment agreement with Sparrow Bicycle Company, Sam Bonney and Melissa Bonney.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance. Second. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote on that.
Just make note that Alderman Beeson came in at seven oh two PM. Eddie? Or, excuse me, Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, ordinance number one nine one zero.
The next three items deal with the Lake Painted Tiff project. The first item is approving the redevelopment plan and project. Second ordinance is designating the Lake Painted Tiff redevelopment project area. And the third ordinance is ordinance adopting Tiff increment financing for the redevelopment project area. So it'd be in order to approve these, the second presentation, to approve them in order one at a time.
Make a motion to pass nineteen eleven, redevelopment plan and redevelopment project.
In the Tiff. I second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? We'll take a roll call vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, that's ordinance number one nine one one.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance, Lake, Payton Lake tax and complete financing redevelopment project area. Discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, that's ordinance number one nine one two.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance adopting tax increment financing. Second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, that's ordinance number one nine one three.
And the next ordinance is the second presentation for an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty national electrical code.
Make a motion to pass that ordinance. Second. Any discussion?
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, that's ordinance number one nine one four.
The next two ordinances deal with franchise agreements with Ameren, the first one is franchise agreement for natural gas service within the municipality, and the second one is for electric service within the municipality. We had some discussion back and forth trying to get some changes in these franchise agreements, and Ameren more or less said that these are their standard statewide models, and they were not willing to make any adjustments.
Make a motion to pass the second reading, pass the ordinance on the gas. Second. Okay. Any questions? Roll call vote.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, that's ordinance number one nine one five.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance on the letter. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, ordinance number one nine one six.
The next item is the first presentation of an ordinance amending the fire service charges for fire service, services outside the corporate limits, and I believe the fire chief has had discussions with the interested parties with regards to these changes in support of other changes.
Thank you, motion. Second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights.
The next item is the first presentation of an amended Tiff redevelopment agreement with Pathfinder DIS. Probably be in order to go ahead and waive first reading and approve the agreement. Recall council previously approved an agreement with Pathfinder DIS, and this is simply incorporate some amendments that were included with the Sparrow Bicycle Company agreement.
Make a motion, still on the first reading, passes the ordinance.
One second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights, that's ordinance number one nine one seven.
The next item is an ordinance, this is first presentation of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of four oh one East Pitt Street. Property owner is willing to convey the property to the city of Pan, there are some back taxes owed on the property of about, around five hundred dollars.
Make a motion to pass the first reading. Call and paper. On how I'm opposed.
The next item is initiation of an amendment to the paint and zoning ordinance. Right now, solar facilities are not listed as a permitted use under the zoning ordinance. This ordinance would establish different standards for different types of solar facilities, depending on the size of the facilities, allowing them in perhaps in residential districts and other zoning districts. Establishing some setbacks for the facilities. Again, it's a draft ordinance that council would be initiating the change and sending it to zoning board for review and recommendation.
I want to say something on this here, we had a meeting this morning, during the weekend, I reviewed this, tore this thing all apart, it's basically, it's basically for only rooftops in town, you can't have a ground mound in town. State, you gotta have at least one acre area. This morning, the zoning officer and the city engineer, I sat down here, we have the city attorney on the phone, and we tore this thing apart, and we're gonna, we'll go ahead and send it to the planning zoning commission, let them look at it, they come back, because the zoning officer's gonna let them know ideas we had about this ordinance. And then, at that time, we'll either re-look at something else, or we'll work on this some more. So I'll make a motion refer to the planning zoning commission for their part for a review. Yes, second, any discussion? Call and paper? I'm opposed, okay.
And the final item I have is a request to approve the building plans for Jack Flash under the redevelopment agreement that the city has to do. For the Jack Flash project, the city council has authority to review and approve the building plans, make sure you're satisfied with the proposed building, lot layout, site improvements, those sorts of things.
I will mention that planning zoning didn't review these plans and approve them before I came to council. I'll make a motion to approve the plans.
Sir.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question concerning, sorry, put it in.
No, we'll get it.
My first question is, I don't know a whole lot about semis, but how's Route sixteen gonna take a semi turning on to hit or off of it, and blocking all the traffic, because I dot not involved, to make sure that the traffic's always gonna be right?
That's a good question.
Because fifty wants to stay on.
You can't, even that pharmacy up town had to get a I dot permit to pull them off the highway, so they don't get their permit.
There's no semis going through the pharmacy, I'm just, I'm worried about the length of the vehicle, or the semi truck can get around.
I agree with you, and they have to get their permit from I dot, not from the city, because it's a highway. All the permits, every place they pull on and off of a car or a semi will be permitted through I dot, because it's a highway. They're not pulling out on our street, which we only have one left. So, it is a I dot issue.
So we get through all this, and then I dot says no, and we can't do it?
Well, I don't think you're approving the site plan, but I think you're approving the building plan. They sent us a building plan, and I think it's just about the looks of this building.
Yes, measurements, size, aesthetic.
And I think that's what you guys are throwing on now, then they submitted a site plan, all of which the approaches and the entrances are permitted through I dot. So all we're doing is talking about a sign, or, or, you know, whatever. Now, we did meet with them about what size grease trap and those things, and where's our sewer, where you want to tap the water, we met with them on those items, but we don't get to regulate where they get on and off the highway.
And I imagine they'll have to get that from I dot.
Yeah, yeah, they have to.
This is just so they can order materials for the actual building, I believe.
That's what I think's going on, but the guy pushing for this is the guy building the building, it's the building.
He's the one that submitted the permit, the Heritage Building.
Yeah.
Okay, so that first and second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Woods?
Yeah.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights.
While you're up, Greg, would you like to do it?
Okay. The item one, the city has received some ARPA funds, and they appropriated, or allotted them to various projects, and one of the projects was a new salt shed, and ours is terrible. So, we did not advertise, blah blah blah, we got three prices to build one just like what the township has, and the low bidder, or the low quote, came from the man that did build the townships. But I'm told I'm supposed to ask for motion to waive bidding process and accept quote from Trent Willhauer Builder and Restoration for construction of a salt shed.
I'll help you celebrate, I'll make a motion to waive bidding process, accept the quote from Trent Willhauer Builder and Restoration for cost of seventy thousand thirty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Second. Second, any discussion or questions for Greg, now it's time to ask your love, your question.
Our next, our next highest price was thirty-six, so.
Seventeen cents.
This is a very easy, same guy that built the thing, we want it to be just like a half price.
Second, roll call vote.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights.
Okay, this is just informational, me, Steve one and Steve two, you can decide who's who. We, we had a phone meeting with Ameren about the easements, they were wanting to make wider out at the, at the lake, and we just agreed to not make them wider, so that's over with, we've been talking to them for.
A year.
A year. Yeah, easy, so we're just leaving it like it is, and they were fine with that, and then, in the nineties, we ran an industrial, from the industrial park to the prairie sewer, force made, and it went, at that time, nobody knew, but the casing under the railroad got jacked through I dot's eighteen inch clay storm tile. And, so, that's been rediscovered, and we've agreed to work with I dot to put that thing back, and we, we came and talked about getting seventeen hundred dollars for a manhole or something, and that has been delivered, so hint, and then we'll be working with the I dot crew to install that manhole. That's all I have.
Greg, while you're up, I was having to explain this Farnsworth, after a while, you're there, can you please explain?
Okay, we, Farnsworth originally drew the plans, we went through a process where we picked an engineer based on qualifications, because you can't ask them what their price is, anyhow, you go through a lengthy thing, and I dot makes you follow their system. So, I, Farnsworth spent many years coming up with these plans for Ninth Street, the storm sewer and the paving, and then, when it went to bid, it was forty percent over or something. Before that, they informed us that if, if the bid went through, they weren't able to oversee it, and they picked out some people we don't know that they did know, and anyhow, so we went through another qualification process, and we, we picked Benton to oversee the construction of that. We think that agreement's still in place, but the agreement to redo the design and get it back into the bidding process for this, this June through I dot, still has to go through Farnsworth. Unless we go through the picking of an engineer fiasco again through qualifications, so we don't want to do any of that, and we want to get this over with and figure it out by whatever date, April or March something, so that we can get on that June letting, so what we'll be talking about is re-upping their contract to make this go through again. That's what, they're in operation or something like that.
And we can do it now, we can talk about it one way. I'll make a motion that we approve supplemental group agreement with Farnsworth group, the amount's nine thousand nine hundred dollars, that's for mindset.
Smith?
Yes.
So that's second, any questions? We can roll call vote now.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eights.
I guess you're done now?
Yes, sir.
Economic development?
Just a couple of updates, I just wanted to let council know that we're starting a planning process with J. Thermo and Development on the city's economic recovery plan for the Tiff district area, to utilize the recent prize grant funds that we were awarded. Also, we are in the process of wrapping up an application for the USDA's community facilities grant program to assist on purchasing a new truck for the ordinance department, the matched portion for that grant will come from the ARPA budget, or the ARPA funds that we designated to that department, so, we hope to have that turned in by the end of the week, so.
Uh, Kim?
The city recently put six ten East First Street and Seven Cedar Street up for sale, it was advertised for three consecutive weeks, we did not receive any bids on either, still, it's still six.
Can I speak on that, Karen?
Yes, sir.
This come to mind this week on that property of six ten, probably an average of one to two times a week, we're asked to assist I dot permitted wide loads, oversized loads that intentionally avoid interstates, and that intersection, every time we're with, was shutting down blocks at a time, and I don't know if we own that, and there's a possibility that we could like work with Greg and DOT contacts to maybe allow DOT to take portion, I don't know, I know this is a bigger project than what we're probably thinking about tonight, but yet, it would be nice to expand that intersection.
I see what you're saying, six ten is the corner.
It is the corner, and it's horrendous for regular traffic, let alone oversized, and if we now own that.
We do.
Even if somebody was interested later, a portion of it could be.
So that's Percy Clark, Percy Cedar.
Just wanted to mention that publicly, I was just thinking about that, it's probably two times a week with those oversized loads, and if DOT could come down and look, and we could work with them on making that corner quite a bit wider there, just cutting off that corner.
DOT would be, wouldn't that be even better?
Yeah, well, and if we have the land now, could allow them to do that, I'm sure they'd be interested, someone could throw that light on.
I like that idea.
I'll let Greg look at it.
Okay. Okay.
The next thing I have is we advertised for lighting upgrades at the pool, we've received two bids, one from Lebon Electric in the amount of three thousand one hundred seven dollars and ninety-five cents, the other one from T and B Electric in the amount of four thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Money from ARPA has had a site for that, so I'd love to approve the bid for Lebon Electric.
Make a motion through Lebon Electric, bid for three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
The treasurer has some discussion. We will move on to mine. I have issued all committee reassignments, which being out of medical leave and request for some reassignments. I made them, all eight of them have them and they know where they're supposed to be. Emergency repairs for Nineteenth and Second, we had to make some major repair in the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars. It was emergency and it's been repaired. We will move on to reports of communities, community safety.
Nothing is done.
Any operations?
Several things, we've been busy. We're still dealing with leaks from that Christmas weekend and during that month, we had several leaks from that area. So, I'll make a motion to approve a sewer adjustment for Linda Reed at One O Nine West Lake, amount of one hundred, one hundred and eight dollars and three cents, leaving a balance due of one ninety-two sixty-five.
Second, any questions?
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
I know everybody's packets. I had a clerk make a copy for a buy up. They wanted to review them, because there was quite a lot of work we had to do with this. I'll make a motion to approve a sewer adjustment for Nellie Mox, that four fifteen, make an amount of seventy-one twenty-nine, leaving a balance due of one twenty-five seventy-six.
Roll call on that.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
I'll make a motion through a sewer adjustment for Ralph Karlock at nine sixteen East Jackson, amount of two sixty-five thirty-two, leaving a balance due of four fifty-eight eighty-two.
Okay, discussion, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
Make a motion to approve a sewer adjustment for Bob Daughery at four hundred West Second, an amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents, leaving a balance due of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
I'll make a motion to approve a sewer adjustment for Ivan M. Pavlo at four oh six West Washington, amount of seven hundred and forty-five twenty-one, leaving a balance due of one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
Some of these leaks, some of these leaks were like a hundred thousand gallons and down to sixteen thousand. So, we've had major leaks. That's all I have.
Okay, move on to administration.
There were some repairs that were needed to be done to the squad car. So, we, I want to make a motion to pay auto writings for those repairs, an amount of four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-nine cents. That, the funds will come from the DLJ account.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
I also want to make a motion to pay issue for the medical evaluations of the volunteer firefighters incurred in the amount of one hundred dollars.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
And I would like to make a motion to address the ARPA funds budget to purchase the LED stop signs for sixty kilograms, an amount of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Then you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Are we putting four signs up? And four new signs or just two signs?
We're going to put LEDs on all four stop signs.
Okay.
That includes that purchase. And then, included in that price is putting two stop sign heads five hundred feet on each end on East West, which is our main concern in traffic recognizing changes. So, that was included in that as well.
Would those be LED?
Yeah, LEDs.
And ones that are going to be five hundred feet away?
Yeah, solar panel for LED as well.
Just asking.
Scotty's looking at me because he wants me to say something. But we talked to somebody about the traffic count and if that calls for four stop signs, the traffic count alone doesn't, that person also talked to Daniel and the speed and all of this, the different hazards presented at that place to people crossing it and people living by it aren't in that calculation that you get off of the traffic count. So, that's what Daniel talked to Lee and.
I suppose I can direct Scott, just to make sure that what the issue in future gets, a four-way is not recommended based upon the traffic study of number of vehicles. He said that has nothing to do with speed and safety, because I explained to him, most of the people through there are regulars, whether they're skimming town or living, it's just, they know the count. But he did recommend and agree with us that the four-way control, the way they're done, would definitely play a much safer role.
Those traffic counts, and Ben can tell me if this is right or not, I think they're more about figuring the delay to the traveler based on the number of people going each direction. Is that, isn't it about the delay?
It can be, and this isn't my area of expertise, but it can be that as well as road designs, the actual pavement designer.
So, it doesn't say you can't put a stop sign. It says.
That had no impact on the safety. It was more of just whether they recommended to help control or enhance the flow of traffic.
Yeah, it's about the flow.
Safety, it's totally separate, he said, and that's a decision that you guys could make. And agree with what we were doing if it's been such a problem for the last hundred years.
I know it's a lot better having it lit up, because the last time we did that, we took them all down.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have first and second, answer the question. We'll take a roll call vote on that.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's.
And then, it looks like we want to make a motion to purchase a new police vehicle, can be the funding for the store.
So, we're explaining this unplanned project. We have been anticipating since two thousand seventeen. My clear vehicles, we have two thousand fourteen, which was purchased a hundred percent by a grant, a K9. We have two two thousand seventeens, and then the two thousand twenty-one, we just called on a grant last year. Well, we usually never have two of the same year squads, because when you get two of the same, they wear out the same. And I've watched it and planned for this. So, I was planning on budgeting for another squad this year, beginning May one. Well, some unexpected expenses, which is the forty-four hundred dollars we just approved out of the DLJ account, come due on one of the squads of the seventeens. Another seventeen, we just put twenty, two hundred in. So, they've reached the hundred thousand mile mark. They're not ready to be totaled. They can still be used, but I'm trying to extend the life of those older squads. They're still safe, but if I pull miles off of them and put them into a different, which I plan on doing in our new budget year. But when you, so I thought, I'd try to wait. But then, by looking at where squads are at, I've located state bids. Usually it's a three-month wait on a, we're in a new squad. But Morrell Brothers, who has state bid, has a squad in stock. And I thought, if I could binagle my budget from next year into this, or if we could somehow, I don't know where the funds are coming from. I didn't budget for this yet. I feel if I bump this project up to now, I can pull miles off the two two thousand seventeens and extend the life of them. I'll have one down each of those squads and probably get at least two more years out of them. Where if we don't do this, when we get a squad beginning May, order three months to get us, three months to install, I'll probably run one or both of those seventeens out. So, I, I think it's fiscally responsible, in my opinion. I think it's just extending life and safety. And so, if we could do that, but yet I didn't plan on doing this, so I don't know where the funds are coming from. We're talking about P, whether we're going to, you know, try to pull it out of ARPA or we're going to loan it until the next, that's, I don't know the answer to that. But that's the project in assembly, why I feel it's best to do, so we don't have more costs down the road.
Mr. Lars? We could use the ARPA funds and then pay that back.
Yeah, the ARPA funds are available for.
But we can, if we take that money from where, from the new budget and put it back into that.
And you can loan.
That's one way. Or we can get a loan. What, two ways to get a loan?
Cheaper getting a loan.
Either way.
Cheaper than what, paying interest on that?
But to, the Morrell Brothers is hoping, they had three of them installed, which, it was three weeks ago I located this. He's hoping that they do have a plan where they can do some installed equipment stuff, like ninety percent of equipment they can put in with their, with their factory. So, there's a portion of the cost that would go, a squad was listed like thirty-nine and it's usually around ten. So, I think if it was fifty or under would cover the expense of the squad. And then, we have some other accounts we can pull if it goes over on heat cows and radios. But, but he has, he's hoping, just to wait to see what you guys decide to do.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Okay, any question or discussion for the chief? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Do you want to limit this, sorry?
You want to put a cap on it?
I think we need to cap the fifty thousand on there.
Okay. All right, so that's a, we have to remake the motion?
The makers accept, oh, that's okay.
Okay, so good, all right, so we're good on that fifty thousand count? All right, so then we'll take a roll call vote.
How are we going to pay for it though? I mean, should we make, decide that tonight or?
You got to come back, you know?
Yeah, and you can lend me more than a vehicle, then we can decide how we're going to pay for it, if it's a time sensitive thing.
We don't know how soon it's on the order, we're still looking around.
No, he's hoping.
No, he's got it.
He's got it. No, it's, it's three-month order.
Well, go ahead and pay for it and take out ARPA fund that it might be.
So, that's the motion that we have, okay. Any other second, so what's now we do?
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero M's. That's with a cap of fifty thousand dollars and using the ARPA budget to temporarily fund the purchase.
And we will go on then to community support.
I would like to make a motion to allow the Historical Society to hang the material we have at the ARPA department.
Okay, second, second, all favor?
And the next item is a question of the fellow's conversation for a presentation by Matt Haines, local physician, to give us the lay-in.
Maybe motion, Brad and I, is Tim and Shirley.
All right. Thank you, Steve. We, I'm, again, I'm Tim and Shirley. I'm one of the directors for the Historical Society. I'm also the chairman for the committee, the Planning and Events Committee, and that's why I gave this hand up here to talk. So, you've been given a packet and you've got a tentative schedule of events there. It's going to start on Friday afternoon and end Sunday afternoon. There's going to be a venue baseball game included in that. The sprinkle long nine, the issue and the challenge. And I think probably the, the group here could probably put a team together and probably compete pretty well, I think. I don't know, maybe not, okay. But we're asking the council to just kind of look at this and see what they think. There's only one issue that I think that's been voiced so far. We've got several musical artists already approved to be part of this. There's going to be four guest speakers and the mayor's going to speak as well, if we can get him to.
Which mayor?
Huh?
Which mayor?
That'd be you, boss. There's going to be three groups of camps that we're wanting to establish. And I think that's where the issue has been so far. There's going to be a Native American group. If you look on the second page, there's a map of the park and you can kind of get an idea of where that's going to be. Most, all our camping will be on the northern part of the park there. There'd be a small group next to the Chautauqua Pavilion. And then, west of the main entrance, there will be the Native American group. And then, we're wanting the Boy Scouts to be part of this, and that would be on the northeast corner of that. Our vendors will be right along the road across from the Chautauqua Pavilion. If we need to close any roads, we'll give it to the chief and make sure that that's taken care of. There's insurance, our insurance coverage is mostly in this packet that you have to show that we have insurance. Some of the things that we're wanting to promote strongly with our camping is that there won't be any fires and that we have an issue, I have an issue where we should leave no tracks. And that means that when we get done, you won't even know that anybody's been there, basically, is what we want to do. My experience with this is, I've been to a lot of encampments and so forth. And so, it's, it's something that I strive to make sure happens. I am also the co-chairman for the Heritage Guild, in charge of the cabins of the program. And so, that, again, is something that strongly encouraged. The venue baseball, you can see the layout of the field there on the large soccer field, where the baseball game will be played on Saturday morning. We're going to have a national anthem sung by someone. We haven't gotten the volunteers yet, but somebody will be singing the national anthem there. And I'll probably have a bagpipes player come in and play some music as well. We're wanting to use the original Chautauqua Agreement, the original agreement made with the Kittsels as a guide for our event. And by doing so, that makes this an historic event and kind of eliminates any other group from coming in and saying that we've set a precedent, I have campers in the park here. There's two ordinances that will be affected. The one allowing us to park on the grass, because the small soccer field on the north side of the park will be where we park unless it's too wet, of course. And then, there's been plans for alternate parking along the roads and different places. And then, the other ordinance is the curfew ordinance, because we'll have people camping out there. Each of these groups will police themselves. I know the primary campers well, because I'll be there and be one of those. The Boy Scouts, I know with, they have a limit on how many scouts they can have per leader. And so, if there's, I don't know exactly, but I think if there's ten scouts, there's got to be like three leaders. So, there'll be adults there supervising. And I want them over there next to that pavilion so that they can use it to cook and so forth and then do their paperwork and stuff, because they're going to be earning community service time and been working on different badges. We have a bicycle race instead of a horse race. There actually will probably be more than one. And the Boy Scouts are going to be kind of taking care of that for us. And we also have a fishing derby that we're going to have. And we'll need some extra hands there, and we're going to use the Boy Scouts in that as well. So, have I pretty much covered everything, guys? I think, maybe? Any questions?
There'd be no votes on the lagoon.
Do you want to, do you want to kind of emphasize that we talked in the committee, but the approximate number of campers? I know that we had discussed that.
Um, yeah, okay. I'm not sure exact number. There's nobody that can know that right now, because our event ended until October. So, again, we got time between now and then. But I know six months will just pretty quick, and we're going to get the ball rolling. But probably, right now, I have, I think, three or four of the premium campers. I've put eight tents on there, but I think that that's probably really ambitious. The Native Americans, I don't know what they usually do with a, when they have the powwow, if they have five or six lodges, teepee lodges. And so, you'd have, if you have two people in each one.
And so you'd have, if you have two people in each one. So I'm figuring probably less than thirty campers other than Boy Scouts. And if the Boy Scouts are an issue, we have alternate places where they can camp. But then they have to be bused from that location to the park and I really don't want to do that if I can't. And we plan on having a list of names to give to the chief and anybody else that requests it, of who's actually going to be the day of the event or the days of the event. So we have an actual number and names and so forth.
My only main concern was the fires, but you said it won't be. So that kind of eliminates that issue. And, and damaging the property, which I also discussed and eliminated that issue. I think this is an awesome idea.
It's only, it's through the discretion of the chief, we're talking about doing, maybe closing one row, maybe doing it one way. And I said, the chief has to be a part of it.
Right.
It's going to be his discretion on what happens. We intend to do that.
He's already been spoken to, I believe, a little bit by the chief, so he's aware of it.
This is something that Penny used to do in the past.
Yes.
We're bringing it back in.
Yes. That's the point, yes.
All right. Well, yeah, I'm especially a big fan of the halftime baseball game.
You want to play short?
I'm not that kind of shooter.
Oh, okay. You don't have to be a really good shooter. It's a fun game, it really is. I, I play shortstop myself, so.
Okay. So what do we want to do from here?
I would like to make a motion to the law firm to have an event.
Okay. With the stipulations as no.
Yes.
Okay.
Second that.
We have a second, do we have any questions for Jim or Molly here? I think you've pretty much covered it.
Will we have to suspend those ordinances now or later date? Or?
Could be just for those two dates.
Yeah.
Just by this council act. Okay. Okay. So we have a motion, a second, questions, let's take a, we can do it all in favor, I guess, there's no money involved. All in favor to allow the Chautauqua schedule? Vote. All right. Jim, thanks, Ed. Looking forward to it. Greg, Matt?
I was asked by somebody, the word Chautauqua is triggered. There, okay, I don't know when, fifteen years ago, they got some money together, they put a roof on a Chautauqua building and it was not put on by people I would call roughers. Anyhow, there's been on and off repairs to it, issues with the ridge caps and it leaks inside. So for the last year, I don't know. Originally Bob Smith started getting prices to put a roof on it. Bob, I think, is on the park revitalization committee. And then Keith has been doing that on and off and so they have some prices, but they're not. Number one, the, the councils never said, hey, let's put a roof on this thing. They have kind of sent me and Kent Taylor out there once in a while to stick some stuff back on or patch it or look at it. But while everybody's in the same room, I think it'd be good if you could talk about whether or not the, the council wants to replace the roof or patch it or whatever they want to do and, because the park revitalization committee, I think, wants a roof, but I don't know how much of it they want to pay for.
Well, I think they're willing to raise money for the whole thing. We were in the making of some grant funding that they were going to put towards that, so.
I thought we were in the, I thought we was.
There was money in the art.
We had money in the art before. That's why. I'm telling you, you know how much? We had forty-nine thousand set aside at that time. And so we need to. Who does, who does the park revitalization committee need to get with and talk about that so everybody's on the same page? And then we get bids that.
Yeah, we need to hear, I ask you about, and get somebody that's a quality roper and get some kind of plans. We got to have plans. Once you get plans, then we can clear it out for bids.
That we got bids already?
There are just.
There's a lot of ways to get bids. You can hire some guy to draw a bunch of pictures, get an architect, because I don't, I think sewer pipes not gross. But if we get a guy we trust to tell us what we should do, maybe we can write up that description and take, take bids on it. If it's going to be over fifteen thousand dollars, we have to advertise it in the paper.
Would it be more affordable, affordable for the Historical Society to do it and we reimburse them?
I don't know how their rules work and I don't know that you can, there's the guy that, you said reimburse and I think that led him up, so. But, but they need a place to start talking so we all know what each other's thinking.
There's a number we can talk and do about different projects.
Well, there's about three of them.
I know that the roper.
Well, there's Virgil and then there's Central Watchman Jigger and then we have a local guy.
There's six, only one.
You have six.
We just need to find a way to look at it and give us.
There may.
Give us something to go by.
We have bids from forty-eight thousand to eighty-eight thousand from six different.
All part of bids because the city didn't authorize advertising.
Well, he's telling you some numbers.
Yeah.
How much do we have in our thing?
I might have told them, I paid them a bid for it.
Forty-nine is about half.
One of you called me up last summer for a bid that we never acted on it. I didn't know anything about it.
Who can, who can they approach? Which, which committee does they need to sit down with?
That or you.
Okay.
Yes. And D I is always payable.
All right. So I mean. They know which way to go and, and you know if we're, you know, it's different if you're going to ask us to pay the whole bill or if you're telling us you're paying half or you've got it. We just need to get talking and then talk to the roughers.
See, whoever is a complete person in the city, we need to come to the park committee meeting.
It sounds like you're being told what to do.
Very well then.
City engineer.
I'm not going to.
We just got to get spec drawn up so we know what we're advertising.
I hope anyone says somewhere near me.
It's forty-four. Oh, forty-one. There are people that. There's one coming up, I think it's one, I can confirm.
Which is a what day of the week?
Tuesday.
In the evening?
Uh-huh.
In the evening?
Yes. I'll have to deal with you on that.
Okay. I typically work on Tuesday nights.
We can work around your schedule.
There we go.
Now.
Okay. So we're good on the Chautauqua and we're good with Greg's roof name, so let's go on to economic development.
We've met a couple of times in the last few weeks because we've met as a committee. Some really cool stuff going on with the grant process. Just want to give Kirby a shout out because she's been working pretty hard on those. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll be able to bring those to council for you guys to review them over. But for tonight, I'm just asking that to make a motion to receive a tip application from Workshop the Market and have staff draft and execute a redevelopment agreement for review and support of the project.
Second that. Okay. Any questions? Second. I'll just need a roll call, vote on that.
Smith.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Eason.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Stevens.